Good evening, everyone. My name is Jed Liston. I'm the alumni director here at the University of Montana. Welcome to the fifth installment of our Alumni Virtual Engagement Series. This series is designed to keep you engaged and informed about the great things going on at the University of Montana and is proudly brought to you by the University of Montana Alumni Association. Tonight, we are using Zoom webinar. It's a platform that's a little bit different than other Zoom platforms you might be used to. Most notably, you will not see the typical multi-panel view, but you will only see the presenters. Also, you can ask questions tonight using the Q and A feature located on the bar at the bottom of your screen. The chat feature is turned off for this particular presentation tonight. We will begin with a campus update and then open it up for your questions. Tonight is an Alumni Virtual Town Hall with Seth Bodnar, who currently serves as the 19th president for the University of Montana, where he has been working alongside students, faculty and staff, and the community to ensure students from all walks of life and backgrounds have access to quality education that prepares them for successful careers and lives as engaged service-minded citizens. Before coming to the University of Montana, President Bodnar was a senior executive at the General Electric Company, serving as its first-ever chief digital officer and leading GE Transportation's Digital Solutions business. Prior to GE, President Bodnar served on faculty at West Point, where he taught economics. President Bodnar graduated first in his class from West Point, received both the Rhodes and Truman Scholarships, and earned two master's degrees from the University of Oxford. He had a distinguished military career, serving in the 101st Airborne Division and the US Army's First Special Forces Group. As a member of the Army's elite Green Berets, he commanded a special forces detachment on multiple deployments around the world and later served as a special assistant to the commanding general in Iraq. President Bodnar is the son of two educators and the husband of a fifth-generation Montanian. He is very proud to be raising three kids in Montana, and he considers it a great honor to be working on behalf of public education in such a special place. President Bodnar, welcome.
Thanks, Jed, and welcome, everybody. You know, it's hard. You can't see everybody and I want to just thank everybody for taking time out on a beautiful evening here in Montana. Summer has maybe not officially arrived via the calendar, but I guess we're on the other side of Memorial Day. So here we are at the beginning of summer and really one of the most beautiful times of the year, I think, in Montana. So thanks, everybody, for taking part in tonight's event. I thought what I do is maybe just start with a brief update on what's going on at the campus, how we've been dealing with this situation, what we're doing, looking ahead, and then really just open it up to a discussion. I want to hear your thoughts and really see what's on your mind. So, you know, I said at the beginning, I'm really grateful for your joining tonight and really incredibly thankful for just the warmth of spirit that embodies what we so fondly call the UM family. And that extends, of course, to everyone here on campus but around the globe. I tell you, the last several months, I don't know that I've had a more challenging time in my career, but I've also never been more inspired by the way this university community has come together. And I want to tell you, you should be very proud of your university and I will tell you, I'm very grateful to be part of this community. And that includes, of course, our just amazing alumni network. So a huge kudos to all of you on this call and all of you around the world who really, over the generations and decades, built those bonds and ties that make the University of Montana so special. You know, this has been a challenging few months, to say the least. And I know we've all had our own personal and professional challenges, and the university is no different. I will tell you, as we entered early March and really started to see this thing starting to come into focus as a significant disruption to our global society, it was quite a challenge to adapt pretty quickly. I mean, going from, you know, on a phone call, the Big Sky University presidents deciding to cancel our basketball tournament, right? As our men's team was in their shootaround, getting ready for the tip of their game, and having to text Coach DeCure and saying, hey, you know, tournament's off. And seeing the NCAA cancel a week later, to the move to the remote instruction, to moving students out of the residence hall. It was a fast and furious process. And, you know, we've really, I've shared with our team, really been focused on planning and operating on really three horizons over the course of the past few months. And what I mean by that is, you know, in those early days, it was quite a challenge dealing with everything four inches in front of our face. You know, taking the decisions we did about sporting events, other events on campus. We made the decision, as most of you are aware, to move to remote instruction after spring break. And that meant our faculty and staff doing a heavy lift of putting more than 4,000 course sections into a remote delivery format, saying to our students in the residence hall, hey, if you need to be here, we're here to support you. But if you have somewhere else to go, then you should. And then really getting down to, by the end of the semester, under 70 people left living in our residence halls, moving to remote work wherever possible, canceling events. You know, it was a really challenging, fast-moving time. And I shared with our campus throughout all of this, our goal first and foremost was to protect the health and safety of our students and the broader community while still enabling our students to continue to learn. And that remains our goal. You know, and for that reason, we said pretty early into this, he said, you know, look, we're dealing with urgent day-to-day, rapidly changing situation, but we better create some bandwidth to plan for what's on the next hill. You know, what's just outside of that immediate planning horizon, and we'd call it that near-to-medium-term horizon, meaning the fall. And even back in early April, we said, we've got to start getting a team together to say, what are we going to do for the fall? And put together a team to develop various strategies. And as many of you have seen, we were excited to be moving back to in-person instruction for the fall semester. And, you know, we've been lucky here in Montana, not just lucky, but I think a well-executed plan that enabled Montana to have the fewest number of cases per capita in the entire country, which does position us very well to move back to in-person instruction in the fall. But that's not a decision to make lightly. And we are working very closely with experts here on campus and in our community to make sure that we're taking the appropriate steps to mitigate the spread of the virus, to understand and ensure that we have the right testing protocols, to understand the prevalence and the spread, also to make sure that we're able to conduct effective contact tracing when cases do arise, and then we have sufficient isolation and quarantine capacity for students that do have COVID, because we will have cases. And so to lead our efforts in those areas, we established a UM Health Advisory Committee, a group composed of faculty members from our School of Public Health and Community Health Sciences, other experts, our chief medical officer here on campus, and operational leaders from across campus. And we're working through those plans right now. But it is very important to us that we have a safe and healthy return to in-person instruction. That's a key part of the UM experience. And it's our duty to do everything we can to enable that. It's complex. It's not easy. Frankly, it'd be a heck of a lot easier to sit back and just say, yeah, we're going to stay in remote instruction for the fall semester. And you're seeing systems that are making that decision. We're not, because we believe it's important and it's our duty to have students back here getting that in-person instruction and that full UM experience. So we're working hard on that. And I will tell you, I am incredibly grateful for the way that our team has responded, the way our faculty and staff responded and adapted, got those courses up and completed the semester effectively, the way our students have responded, you know, adapting, and many of them living at home. Maybe somebody on the phone have a student who's having to be at home over the course of the past few months, back under, you know, family members' roofs with different rules and all of those challenges that that brings. But I will tell you, there's been a great resilience. And I've also been proud of the way our university community has stepped up to help our community adapt to this. You know, whether it's responding at the local level with, you know, people like Rich Bridges, one of our Regent's professors, or neuroscientists converting his lab to make hand sanitizer for first responders, or our College of Business and some of our faculty members there working on what we call the Bear Program, Business Emergency Assistance and Recovery, to help local businesses, together with the Missoula Economic Partnership, navigate resources available to help them, you know, sustain the disruption caused by COVID. The way, frankly, our scientists here on campus have helped inform our planning efforts. So I think you heard from a few of our tremendous biologists last week, they've been instrumental in making sure that we understand the steps we need to take to protect our community and how we can get to a safe reopening in the fall. And frankly, you know, you'll be pleased to know that the University of Montana is having an impact on this at the global level. Some of you may have heard of our Center for Translational Medicine, led by Dr. Jay Evans, at the cutting edge of vaccine development for COVID-19. They make some kind of adjuvant in there, and they frankly are involved with all of the vaccine testing for COVID. They've got some multimillion-dollar grants from the National Institutes of Health, and just really exciting to see the way that our faculty here on campus are not just helping our local community, but playing a key role in the global response to this pandemic. And so it's been an interesting semester. It's going to be an interesting year ahead. But I've also shared with our campus that it's important not just to deal with the immediate day-to-day and not just sufficient to think about the fall. We have to, right now, as a university, think about what's on the other side of this? Who do we want to be as a university on the other side of this pandemic? Because there will be another side of this. And so we've stood up a team called a University Design Team that's asking the question of what does a flagship of the future look like? You know, what does our society, our community, our state, our nation need of a flagship university like the University of Montana? And how are we adapting to best meet that need? It's an important exercise for us to do, and it's important for us. Yes, we're dealing with challenges, but it is very important that we don't set back and let things happen to us, but we take hold of our future and shape it the way that we think it needs to go. And so that's where this team's work is focused. We're really excited about that team's work, but also cognizant of the challenges that we face. And happy to talk more about that in depth if we'd like in the Q and A. But, you know, I think it's important to note that every university across the country is facing real challenges as a result of COVID-19. You know, when we, I think, not I think, I know rightfully said to our students, hey, it's important that we make sure that if you can go home, if you can be in a place where you can more easily socially distance, to not be in the residence halls. Well, we refunded prorated portions of tuition or, excuse me, room and board. Events got canceled. Summer camps are reduced. We're thinking very cautiously about what does fall sports look like? Key question of what's going to happen with Grizz Football? We're working through that. We don't know the answer, but we know that there are going to be tough challenges ahead. And so one of the things that I've told my team again and again is that, you know, we kind of have to embrace the fact that there will be challenges. This is not a crisis that's going to end overnight. As much as I want to have a vaccine tomorrow, it's going to be a little while, and we're going to be dealing with these challenges. But we will prevail. I've shared with my team, Jed mentioned, I was, I call it a previous life, was a special forces officer, and one of the things we have to go through is a course called SERE School, S-E-R-E, Survival, Evasion, Resistance, Escape, where they teach you how to survive in the wild. You get captured. You go through a simulated. Not really that simulated, actually a pretty realistic prisoner-of-war experience. You know, the idea is if that were to happen to you, how can you survive through it? And they give you training and tools. And one of the things that stuck with me, and I think it's been, you know, put into a much broader frame through Jim Collins' book, Good to Great, he talks about the advice that Admiral Stockdale, who many of you remember Admiral Stockdale as a political candidate later, but he was a prisoner of war in Vietnam, and coined something called what people now call the Stockdale Paradox, which, you know, he says, look, you know, in a tough situation, believe it or not, it's actually not the, well, of course, it's not the pessimists who survive tough situations, right? They give up hope and they wither away. But perhaps counterintuitively, it's also not the optimists that do the best, because they keep thinking we're going to get rescued tomorrow. We're going to get rescued tomorrow. And then eventually, they lose. They give up hope. But it is actually the realistic optimists who do the best, the people who are willing and able to confront the most brutal facts of their current reality but remain strong in their faith that in the end, they will prevail. And so, you know, that's how, as we're looking at the University of Montana, it's no doubt going to be a tough year ahead, as it will for every institution of higher education. And we have to confront those challenging facts. But I will tell you, we are strong in our faith that in the end, we will prevail. We will be strong on the other side of this. And that's the way we're going to continue to approach this. So we've got a lot of exciting things going on at the university. A lot of good progress. I'm happy to tell you that, you know, our applications are up year over year. In fact, our non-resident applications are up over 30% year over year. We're seeing strong interest, a lot of uncertainty out there for students, but a lot of great progress on the enrollment front. We're in the process of a renewal of sorts of our campus and a few good building projects underway. And our students continue to impress us. Just over the last month or so, we announced that six of our students won Fulbright scholarships this year, six. Fantastic. And so, you know, the University of Montana is an incredible place. We're having a, obviously, we're going through all the challenges that our global society is with this pandemic. And we're not, we're clear-eyed about the challenges we see ahead, but we're also incredibly strong in our faith and our optimism that we will prevail through this. So with that, I'm happy to take questions. I'm interested to hear what's on folks' minds.
This is from Casey. President Bodnar, if Missoula experiences a high number of COVID-positive cases in the summer or fall, what are your specific trigger points under which UM would switch to remote learning scenario? Thank you so much for your efforts and your time. Go Grizz.
Yeah, thanks, Case. It's a good question. And it's something that, you know, we're going to continue to work very closely with local and state officials as we monitor the spread of the virus. You know, what's interesting is if you look at the national gating criteria we've seen set out, you see this sustained reduction of cases over a 14-day period that allows you to move into different, more progressive phases. You know, in Montana, we have the blessing and the challenge of having multiple days of zero cases. So as, in fact, I was called to Helena in April for four days to work on the Governor's Task Force for reopening. And, you know, as the medical and public health officials were talking about this and laying out those criteria, and we're now in phase, well, we soon will be in phase two as of next week. You know, what we have to consider in evaluating our operating posture for the university is not just the number of cases, but our ability to understand the prevalence of the virus and prevent uncontrolled spread of the virus. And so as the state of Montana progressively moves from phase one, will soon be in phase two, and eventually in phase three, it's not just about the number of cases, but our ability for testing, our ability to do effective contact tracing, to understand who might have been exposed. Our ability in our context to isolate people who have the virus and quarantine those who may have been exposed. And then, of course, to ensure that we don't overwhelm our healthcare system's capacity. And back in March, when we did not have adequate testing capacity, we didn't have contact tracing in place. We didn't really understand, as a global society, the nature of this virus, our ability to kind of manage or prevent uncontrolled spread and our hospital and healthcare system from being overwhelmed was very limited. And so we made that decision together with state and local officials to move to remote instruction. Our ability today to manage and prevent an uncontrolled spread is much greater, and it should, and I expect will, get better into the fall. And so we don't have a specific number of cases, but really, it's a combination of those factors that enable us to ensure that we can manage and prevent kind of an uncontrolled spread and the overwhelming of our healthcare system. That's our objective. And we're going to continue to work very closely with Missoula City County Public Health, our local healthcare systems and community in St. Pat's, as well as the Governor's team and the state to make sure that we're making the right decisions here. And thankfully, we are very blessed here at the University of Montana to have a School of Public and Community Health Sciences. And so, in fact, I was just on our planning call this afternoon, and we have our local or faculty epidemiologists. In fact, the people who are working very closely at the state level and informing the state's decision, they're here working at the university. And, you know, I am going to continue to rely on their expertise, on their advice, to make sure that, again, we protect the health and safety of our UM family and the broader community, but do everything we can to enable our students to continue to learn and make progress in their academic and professional journeys.
Okay, we're going to pivot just a little bit. You studied and taught economics. This pandemic has opened our eyes to many economic interdependencies that we previously have taken for granted. What do you predict will be the single most significant economic impact of the pandemic on the university and in turn, how that will affect the Missoula and Montana communities?
Yeah, that's an interesting one. And I would, I guess, maybe not hazard to guess what's going to be the most significant impact on the university and on the Missoula economy, but maybe some of the impacts that we're likely to see. And I think from a university standpoint specifically, I think, you know, we are going to see, and one of the positives that we're going to see, we're going to see people embracing technology to help supplement and enhance learning. It can't replace the in-person aspect of learning, but I think we're going to see some really interesting and exciting ways that faculty and staff members and students are going to leverage the best of what technology can bring to supplement and enhance that face-to-face instruction that is at the core of a UM education. I think, you know, a decade ago, you know, a lot of talk was around massive online open courses. You know, universities offer education for free online and these massive courses. And why would anybody go to college? And we really haven't seen this huge move to online education, because it's really hard to replace that interpersonal interaction, that those kind of intangible aspects of personal development that one gets from living in residence hall, being in a fraternity or sorority, being in a club, having that interaction with a faculty member. And I think one thing that we've seen through this crisis is just how much that means to people and how integral that is to a UM education. And so I think it reminds us of the importance of that on-campus experience, that interaction. But we've also learned some ways that you can use technology really effectively to learn. And so I'm really excited by, I think, some of the innovation that we'll see coming out of that, where you see the best of both worlds meet. And I think that's something we're going to double down on at the University of Montana. And that's frankly probably one of the biggest ones for the University of Montana. You know, I think more broadly for, and I think, because the question Jed did ask about the economy more broadly, too. Yeah. You know, I think what we've seen, a really kind of interesting example of how supply chains have become so global and frankly, so easily disrupted. And so I think we'll see perhaps companies making different decisions about where and how they make the various products that enable their, or components that enable their products to come together. And I mean that for hardware, but also for software and for other types of products. That you'll probably see more consolidation, a little bit, people working to really make their supply chains a little less vulnerable. I think one of the other, I think, positives that's come out of this, and I think a lot of people are writing about this, and I think people are perhaps rethinking, and I think this is a good thing, the term and what we mean by essential workers. I think we've seen through this that that person standing at the checkout line at Albertson's or Orange Street Food Farm, they're pretty essential to our society continuing. That janitor cleaning that hospital and making sure it's safe, those transit workers, those bus drivers, those Uber drivers. I think these are people, and these are the types of jobs that frankly are maybe too often overlooked. And we've seen just how essential some of those workers are. And my hope, my optimistic hope, is that it brings us to a little bit more of a compassionate and understanding place as a society when we think about just who is essential to enabling all of our lives to be what they are and how much we depend, frankly, on other people to lead the lives that we do. We all, and we all feel like we're very independent and self-reliant. And I think this situation has made us realize once again just how interdependent we are on one another. And my hope is that that's a positive thing coming out of this.
Okay. John asks, what are the benefits for starting fall semester early and ending early?
So, you know, great question. And this is, as we looked at the fall, we started thinking through, all right, well, Thanksgiving poses a problem, because spring break for us this past semester posed a big problem. You know, you send off a bunch of students all over the country. And, you know, I went to West Point, but this isn't West Point, and I can't preclude them from leaving campus like they could when I was a cadet at West Point. And you send them off to the four corners of the earth, and you come back and you worry about, all right, are we going to have an outbreak after that? And as we get into the late fall, and a lot of the models are predicting, you know, a potential another resurgence, and then you're entering the beginning of flu season. another resurgence, and then you're, you're entering the beginning of flu season with, you know, respiratory issues and, and prevalence of flu. You know, the, the, the thinking is really evolved and you've seen other institutions across the country do this. Say, how can we maybe start a little bit early and then wrap up by Thanksgiving? So that we enable our students and, and families to celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday, but then don't have to all re-congregate back on campus. So we feel that's the most appropriate way for us to get the semester in, have our students achieve their objective and minimize the risk to, to our, our UM family, but also to the, to the broader Missoula community as well.
Okay, our friend Mike in Spokane says, looking long-term, as I know we will get through this, what are our plans for the decrease in the number of nationally available freshmen starting in 2024? And Mike has done his homework. And then in parentheses, 17 years since the start of the Great Recession and a drastically lower birth rate.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. It's, it's a great question. You've, you've, you've been doing your research and, and that is something that higher-end institutions across the country are looking at. It's called the demographic cliff. The Great Recession, 2008, 2009, and you really start to see it in 2025, a big drop-off in the number of 18-year-olds. And so we've been looking at that, absolutely. And, and I think it's, you got to do two things. And, and this is where our efforts are focused. Number one, for that, I'll call it core traditional student group. You know, that, that traditional 18 to 22-year-old that attends college, you're going to be, you're going to see nationally a big decline in them. And so if you're going to be successful as an institution, you better make sure that, that your offerings are, are providing for students what they need. And, and the way we think about it here at the University of Montana is, is we want to make sure that our students are career-ready. So on day one, they are prepared to be successful in their job. They've had the experiential learning opportunities, they've had the skills developing in their courses. They are, they are ready to hit the ground running and be productive in, in their jobs on day one. But at the same time, we recognize the fact that the world changes pretty quickly. And you know, there, there's lots of studies out there that say that, that the half-life of technical skills today is about five years. So you know, that means if you're a freshman, half of what you've learned in your freshman year is not relevant by the year after you graduate. Again, that, we could argue and debate that study, but the point remained that our students are going to have to adapt and continually learn. So we need to make sure they're career-ready on day one, but we also have to ensure that they are what we call tomorrow-proof. And that's a term that we use here at the university, that they are able to think critically, they're able to adapt, they're able to solve problems, they're able to work in teams. And, and the universities that combine and are able to do those two things, they, they ensure that their students are career-ready, but at the same time, they're tomorrow-proof, able to adapt and innovate over the course of, of 10 to 12 jobs throughout their career. Those are the universities that are going to do well. And so that's the type of university that, that we are. And those are, as we think about a flagship of the future, really a flagship of the future has to be a, a university that embodies through its, its education, the, the approach of making students both career-ready and tomorrow-proof. But what I also, what I, what I think is also important for, for institutions of education to acknowledge is that back to that point of things change quickly. I, I, when I look at, I, I go out and I, as many of you know, I spend a lot of time in high schools, going out and talk, especially here in Montana and the region. Mike, I was in Spokane, I guess that was in February. Fortunately, we had a little mishap, we got in a little bus accident. Thankfully, no one was, was hurt, but, but had a nice visit with Spokane. But one of the things I talk with students about is, you know, based on the studies you read, the students that are, are sitting in those chairs that we're talking to, those 17-year-olds, by the time they're my age, or frankly, even five years younger than I am, many of them will be in jobs that, that don't even exist today. And so that, back to point one of, of ensuring that we provide an education that's tomorrow-proof is really important. But, but the second thing I had, I think universities have to acknowledge is that learning doesn't end when you get that diploma and walk across the stage into your first job. People are going to have to come back to, to, to universities and reskill and upskill and, and reinvent themselves multiple times over the course of their career. And so we are, we recognize that demographic cliff, but we realize that there's a lot of learners out there who need education. And again, a flagship of the future is one that, that acknowledges that learners at all stages of their, of their lives have a need, need for education and how do we best meet that need? And a great example is a program we launched about a year and a half ago now with, with ATG, Advanced Technology Group here in Missoula. It's, you know, ATG is a company, they, they help with software, software implementations. They're a tech company, grown very well. You know, they had a big celebration for them in the, in the fall. They hired their 100th UM alumni and they got acquired by a Fortune 200 company called Cognizant. And Cognizant came in and said, you know, we love these employees. We love these folks. Where are you getting them all? And they said, University of Montana. And they said, well, they're, they're better than people we see in Silicon Valley, in, in, in New York, around the globe. We, what if we wanted to put more of a footprint here? And the CEO of ATG, Tom Sturgis, great Missoulian. And I sat down and he said, well, look, how, how could we scale what we've been doing? And in a span of, of a two-month period, we jointly developed a program, a 12-week program in which our business faculty and ATG Cognizant employees worked together to prepare people for jobs at ATG Cognizant. And these are people who have, many of them, I think 99% of them have already graduated from college, but perhaps were, were underskill or, excuse me, underemployed or, or looking for a new direction. And we put them through this 12-week program, joint program. And, and we, we launched the first cohort in a year ago, in February, so about 15 months ago. 26 people started in a cold February in Missoula, people looking for that next step in their career, people looking to come back and learn and, and take on a new challenge. We had one woman who'd been, who had, who had a degree, but was a bartender at Reds. Another that was a CrossFit instructor. We had one young man who was, had an engineering degree from Bozeman, wasn't happy with what he was doing and wanted to, wanted to take a new path. And we had people in their 50s. And all 26 of those people started and 12 weeks later had a job offer from ATG. And we've done three more cohorts since then and, and every one of them has, has been successful. And, and I think that's the type of partnership that universities and companies need to do to help not just people learn and adapt themselves personally, but that's how you help our economy grow. Because we've created over 100 tech employees here in Missoula, Montana over the last year. And that's a big deal. And that fuels economic growth right here in the state of Montana. That creates good, high-paying local jobs. And that's again, a key role for the university. And I think you're right, that demographic cliff is coming, but there's a much broader scope of education that, that we can and frankly, I feel are obligated to provide for our community.
Okay, we have one that is related to the recruitment. It says, are we taking advantage of the fact that Montana has the fewest COVID cases in the country in terms of recruiting students or even encouraging students to transfer to UM?
Well, you know, I think what we're trying to do is, is obviously we want to be respectful of, of other institutions. We want to be respectful of the, the, the reality of this situation. It's some, something you take lightly or, or joke about, hey, we have lower cases than everybody else. That's not something that we do. But what we, what is important for us is to enable students to keep on learning. And so we have been very vocal about the fact of, that Montana has the lowest cases per capita. We have strong marketing and outreach campaigns that really we've established in earnest over the past year and a half. Many of you know that we, we've put a lot of effort into rebuilding our, some of our marketing and recruiting efforts that had struggled for a while, frankly. And even before the, the pandemic, we were starting to see the, the fruits of that labor. I mentioned our, our non-resident applications were up 37% as of early March. They're still up about 33%. And what we're doing right now is we're reaching out to all of those students who are familiar with the University of Montana, who've applied. And we're, we're making it very clear to those students in California, in Washington, in Oregon, that hey, University of Montana, we are open, we're wide open. This is a beautiful place, a great place with a tremendous education and, and a, and a beautiful environment where we are blessed to, to have low incidence of, of COVID and that we're here to, to support your learning needs. So yes, we are absolutely communicating that in ways that are respectful, but, but ways that are making sure students know of the great options they have here at the University of Montana under any circumstances, but perhaps even more intriguing under the current circumstances. So really good question.
Okay, our friend Carrie in Seattle, what are the most meaningful ways that UM alumni across the nation and around the world can help the university?
Well, thank you and thanks for that, for your interest and willingness. You know, I think it's, it's really two ways. Number one is, and, and both of them actually happened through an effort that we've, we've launched over the last year and a half is to really build out a much stronger formal alumni chapter network. So we have a great alumni base and I've, I've just been, been so excited to see the passion of GRIZ Nation around the country and around the globe. What we didn't have though, perhaps was a formalized chapter network in each of the towns. You know, we, people get together for the GRIZ cat game, they get together with their friends. But, but if you're a new alum that has moved into city X, it was sometimes tough to break in. And interestingly, I had a young woman who has stepped up to lead our, some of our alumni efforts in, in one of our cities that's close to campus, who shared with me, you know, when I lived in San Diego, I actually saw more GRIZ because those were my friends than I do in Kalispell. I, it's, I don't know how to, I know people get together, but they're not my friends. I don't really know them, it's tough to break into that. And, and that's really at the heart of why we want to build these chapters is to create ways for alumni to connect with each other and with the community. And, and, and the two things that I think are really important is, you know, I, I want our alumni or our, our recent graduates, alumni, but I want them to walk across the stage with, and, and after they shake my hand, they have a diploma in their hand, they know that they have a job offer, they know where they're going to work and they know the city in which they're going to live, they already have a connection to the alumni network there. And they already have great ties and, and people that are going to not just provide, you know, friends and, and fellowship, but, but career opportunities. You know, there's a, there's an old, that old adage that says, it's not just what you know, it's who you know. And I had an opportunity to, I was down at LinkedIn headquarters in January. And some of the data that they shared around the power of networks, and they do research across their platform and look at likelihood of who gets jobs and who doesn't. And the, you know, the, the, the research on the success of job candidates who were referred or had some comment by someone who knew a hiring manager, like I think it was 9X more likely to get that job. And so you think about, one of the benefits of going to any university should be the way that alumni can network. Again, helps provide social activities, but helps you in your career. And so when I think about the first way that you can help, help us build those networks, help us build out those chapters and help your fellow GRIZ. Make the, our alumni network a strategic differentiator for the University of Montana. So that when people think, hey, if, where do I want to go to school? Well, going to UM, I get a world-class education, but man, that alumni network is fantastic. And i- if you're a GRIZ, you're going to have a lot easier time getting a job, progressing in your career and, and really, really succeeding. And so, so that's point one. Help us build those chapter networks, help your fellow GRIZ, make those networks even tighter and, and strengthened. And then the second part is from a recruiting standpoint, and we've already built this up again through the chapters, but I can't tell you how impactful it is for prospective students, and we've done this over the past two years, to get a call from, from a GRIZ alum that says, hey Seth, you're thinking about where you want to go to school? Let me tell you about the University of Montana and how great it was for me. That personal touch through phone calls, through handwritten notes makes a huge difference. Proudly telling that UM story, which is one of our priorities for action here, is, is really important. And you play a key role in that and helping us recruit those future GRIZ, but also helping those, you know, our newest alumni, and frankly, not just our newest, our alumni at all stages of their career, help even further strengthen that network that lifts all GRIZ up to reach their full potential.
Great. The next question, we crave some good news. I hope John Krasinski hasn't trademarked that, but what is the most positive thing that has come out of the pandemic in your mind at the University of Montana?
Well, there's lots of good news at the university. And I shared with you some of the progress that, that we've seen on the recruiting front, on the enrollment front. You know, our students succeeding. And, and, and so there's lots of good news. And I think you, you should be excited about the, the progress we're making as an institution. But specifically with regard to the, the pandemic and good news that, that have come out of that is I think, I think two things. I think number one, back to the point that I mentioned a little bit earlier about what we're learning, about ways to combine the best of an in-person experience with technology to really enhance education. I think we're learning a lot on that front and I think you're going to see some great innovation across higher ed and specifically here at the university over the coming years. But I think the other thing that's been a real positive that's come out of this is that, you know, those of you that I've met with over the past year, you'll hear me talk a lot about the UM family. That this is a place where we look out for each other, we take care of each other. When we stumble, we lift each other up. When we face hard times, we band together, we get through them together. Our, our, our freshmen will always hear me and they, they are going to get used to hearing me say that, cite that oft cited African proverb that says, if you want to go fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go together. And this university is a place where we go together, we support each other. And I think that, that sense of family and that sense of commitment to and reliance upon each other has been strengthened through this. And I've been really proud of the way our faculty, our students, our staff, this community has come together through this. And I think that, that we've seen those bonds be strengthened even further. And I think that will help us come out of this stronger and will help us be an even better institution moving forward.
Okay, Denise from Denver acknowledges that it might be difficult to conduct homecoming as we always have this, this year. She's wondering if you could share with us any timelines for announcing, you know, the football season, which then lends into homecoming. Do you, do you know of any, you know, set timelines, drop dead points perhaps?
Yeah, you know, we don't have a, a drop dead points at this time. We don't have, we don't have, you know, a, a firm need to decide buy date there. This is something that is evolving daily. And this is a some, this is something that, you know, universities across the country are working their way through. And frankly, sports leagues across the country are working their way through. And so in fact, I have a, our spring meeting with the, the presidents of the Big Sky Conference Universities next week. And this is something we're going to talk about. And what's interesting is, you know, I know Coach Alk was on, on the show, on this. you know, I know Coach Halk was on on the show or on this program a couple, couple sessions ago. And and I tell you, our coaches, our our players, our our staff, we're all, everybody's ready to go. I was talking to to Kent Haslam the other day, and he said, I said, How are things going? How are our coaches doing? He said, Man, I need them to need, I need them to have other things to do. Because these are these people are who, these are not people who are conditioned to to be sitting around, you know, and not that they're sitting around, they're working. But he said, They want to be out there coaching. They want to be out there developing young people. They want to be out there getting things going. So everyone wants to to get going. But we need to do so in a in a way that ensures the health and safety of our community. And and, you know, you look across the Big Sky Conference, we're in eight different states. And so the situation in California is very different from the situation in Colorado, Arizona, Montana, of course. You know, we joked and said, Well, maybe we're going to have, we're just going to play the brawl of the wild 10 times this year or 11, because we need a tiebreaker. But and I don't think we're going to do that. But I do think we're going to have to see, we will see a lot of flexibility in those schedules. We're working hard to make sure we have a good season, but I think I think we're going to, there's going to be a lot of uncertainty. Really, not just up until the the season begins, but perhaps even during the season. And I think we're all settling into to that reality. So I wish Denise, I wish I had a date by which we were going to make that decision. I wish I could tell you right now, it's going to be exactly as it is. But the simple fact is, we just don't know yet. We're going to continue to monitor it over the summer. But, you know, we all are looking forward to to getting back to seeing our student athletes out there, out there on the field to defend friendly strife.
And JF from New York, who's been a staple in our watch parties and helped put us on. He had asked about when we would expect to do alumni gatherings again and functions and to what degree. And I think that same principle that you just mentioned, a lot will depend on what's going on locally. And I think that makes sense for the chapters. Would you like to comment about?
Yeah, it's a local determination how we do those types of things. And and I think we're all going to have to find creative ways to do it. And and we, you know, so here's a case in point, our local high school graduations. It was our our public health officer, Ellen Leahy, was very concerned about size of, you know, high school graduations. We can't bring those, you know, that many people together. And and that's her job, right? Her job is to protect the health and safety of this community. But, you know, and typically, these graduations are held in the Adams Center. But, you know, talked directly with with Superintendent Rob Watson and said, Hey, Rob, we're here to help. We want, we want to enable graduation ceremonies to take place if 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 they can. And frankly, we're able to develop together with Missoula City County Public Health. You know, limit site gatherings or really didn't want gatherings above 250 people. But if you think about Washington Grizzly Stadium, can see about 25,000. So we can appropriately distance people. And the way we worked it was that each of the high schools is around about 250 students. So each one has two guests and those 250 students are spread out on the field. And then you have 250 people spread out socially distanced in the in the bleachers on the on the west side of the stadium. And then 250 on the east side of the stadium, they come in, each of those groups of 250 through different entrances. Our ticketing system ensures that we have people spaced out and that we can do contact tracing if need be. And so we had to really think hard about ways we could enable that event. But I'm really proud of the fact that our university is able to host our high school students and and at least two members of their family. Now, they'd all like more, of course. But but at least we get two in there for each of the graduates to celebrate a really special moment. And and I think the same applies to gatherings in general. You know, you obviously, you gotta, you gotta monitor situations. And then there are ways you can do things while still adhering to 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 public health guidelines. And that's, I think, the way we have to think about alumni events. Those are the ways we're going to have to think about Grizzly football and homecoming. We're going to have to adapt over the course of this year and and we'll see how the situation emerges.
Cody has asked, do we plan to test students for COVID as they come in? And do we, you already mentioned contact tracing or work with local health centers to do do so? And is there a space for students to quarantine? Is that all part of the plan?
Those are all the plans we're working, working on our way through right now, actually. And that's the, that's the, you know, we laid out a framework for our team. Now, we pulled together a group of of public health experts and medical experts here on our campus and in our community. Called it our Health Advisory Group, and and I'm relying on that expertise and have asked them to help us establish a framework, you know, for mitigation through, you know, physical distancing measures in place, you know, classrooms being structured differently, Plexiglas barriers being put up, ways that we can mitigate the spread of the virus, number one. Establishing an effective testing protocol that we we can use to, in collaboration with the state, we're going to have to do this in close collaboration with the state of Montana. But to understand the prevalence and spread of COVID-19 on our campus. The third is trace. So what mechanisms are we putting in place to enable effective contact tracing? And then the fourth is 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 isolate slash quarantine. So MTTI, we call it our MTTI framework, mitigate, test, trace, and isolate slash quarantine. And and those are, they're not simple plans. There's no playbook out there for this. I wish there were. But but we're developing one as we go. But in close consultation with experts here on campus and frankly, across the country, as other universities are working to to address these same problems. But yes, those are absolutely the right questions. And we're working through those right now.
Here's one about something that happened over the spring that I think many alumni participated in. This viewer donated to the UM Emergency Student Fund from a solicitation that she got from from us. She's curious to hear how dispersing that money has been going. Were those funds able to help students who had financial difficulties in the spring? And will this active fund, will this be an active fund moving forward? It seemed like a really good idea to to her.
Well, thank you very, very much for your generosity and absolutely, those funds were very, very quickly utilized. And frankly, the the demand far exceeded the supply, unfortunately. You know, our our students, many of them are working, one, sometimes two jobs. Many of them are are parents. And and many of the jobs that students typically do are in service based industries, which largely shuttered in the early stages of this, and many of which remain so. And so this situation has created tremendous, tremendous financial hardships for our students. And, you know, one thing I've been amazed to learn and just see again and again is the the impact that a very small amount of money, 100 bucks, can make on a student's ability to to persist through and finish their degree versus have to quit. And so absolutely, that money has had a tremendous impact. That is a fund that will be continued to, it will be ongoing in a way that our alumni can really help, you know, those that are able. I know, obviously, not everyone's able and everyone's facing challenges through this. But but I'm deeply grateful for the way that the UM family has stepped up and helped our students. Because this situation has created tremendous financial hardships for our students.
Okay, I think we have time for one more. One of our viewers said, We've heard on these webinars over the past two weeks how sincerely proud the faculty have been with the way their students and colleagues made the transition to online classes and this rather non traditional close to the semester. They said that it was very heartwarming to hear about. So for you, what are you most proud of at U of M for what has happened these past three or four months?
Yeah, thanks, Jed. I mean, I I think it's just the way that this community has rallied around our students and their success. Again, everything we've done has has been with health and safety at the forefront. But we, many of you know, we have five priorities for action here at the University of Montana. Five priorities that guide our our cabinet meetings, all of our meetings. And priority number one is to place student success at the center of everything we do. And I've been so proud of the way that our faculty and our staff and our whole community has embodied that that priority throughout the past three months, you know, it's not a, it's not an easy task if you're a faculty member in the midst of a semester to say, You know what, you need to switch your course delivery. You need to deliver it remotely. You need to ensure your students achieve those same learning outcomes. That's not easy. But our faculty members adapted and did that. 4,000 plus sections. And I dropped in on many of those sections occasionally. I would find time and I would ask a faculty member and I'd join their Zoom session and just ask students how they're going. And it was really interesting, you know, because it's a, it's really kind of an intimate way to drop into a class when you're seeing students in their homes, in their bedrooms, at the dining room table with parents in the background, continuing to try to learn and just to see the way that how how strong was that connection between our faculty members and those students? And how much our faculty worked to to maintain those connections and help our students through a through a really challenging time? Everyone's routines were turned upside down. And for many of them, that routine of going to class, that professor that they know, they're seeing their their friends, even if it's just on Zoom, is an important component, not just of their academic progress, but but their but their emotional wellbeing. And and to see our, the way our community stepped up to enable that and the way our staff I mean, countless hours, I look, I think about our financial aid director, Emily Williamson, who's fantastic, UM alum herself, who leads our financial aid office just every day. You know, getting in early, staying late, plugging away, processing students' applications for emergency aid, helping find ways to do whatever she can to help students persist in their academic journey. The way our custodial staff has has stepped up and helped with our buildings, the way our residents, residents life, folks helped Pete, helped our students transition. I mean, just everyone stepped up when above and beyond, put themselves at risk too. But all to ensure that that we place student success at the center of everything we do. And it's just been frankly, a humbling experience to be part of a community that that is so focused on our student success. And just, it's a great reminder of why UM is the special place that it is.
Okay, that's a great place to close. I would like to acknowledge and thank Sam Roberts made some very nice comments. And and thank you for your relationship with Embal Amason, who was near and dear to a lot of us. And that was nice. And and Ty Danes, who manages HR at Dartmouth, he's acknowledging everything that we're going through here and he's he's proud of what we're doing. So I just wanted to acknowledge those. Those were more comments than they were questions. So President Bonner, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Thanks, Jed, and thanks, thanks to everybody out there. It's been, like I said, a challenging time, but I, but also a very inspiring time. And thank you for your, for being here tonight and for your commitment to and engagement with our with our university. I'm really proud to be a part of this community.
Great. Please join us next Wednesday for a presentation. And Seth talked a little bit about Jay Evans, and he will be presenting next week. His vaccine discovery and development team is actually working on a COVID-19 vaccine right here at U of M. And he's going to talk about that work next Wednesday. So on behalf of the University of Montana Alumni Association, thanks for coming. Good night and go GRIZ.